Right, good afternoon Chairman. Good afternoon Chairman.
His mic has switched off.
Can you switch your mic on Chairman? Sorry about that everybody, let's start again. Good afternoon, my name is Chris Burke, I'm the Chairman of Sacre and I represent the Catholic Church. If I could make the following points before we start please. If during the meeting a member would like to ask a question or raise a point, they're requested to use the chat function and just write speak as a comment. And Steve if you could keep an eye on chat for me, I'd be grateful. When invited to speak by the Chairman, members should unmute their microphones and switch on their video. When members have finished speaking, they should mute their microphone and switch off the video. Members are requested to indicate using the chat function if they're leaving the meeting. And finally, if members lose connection during the meeting, it is recommended that they end the call using the red phone icon and rejoin via the meeting link provided. Has everybody got that?
Yes Chairman.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
And can you see chat alright Steve?
Yes, I can Chairman, yeah, thank you.
Okay. If everybody could indicate, if you haven't spoken, if you could just indicate on chat that you're receiving, at least you can hear everything.
Chris, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Me you're talking to.
Is that Wendy?
It is me, I've had some problems here but can you hear me now?
I can hear you loud and clear Wendy.
I don't know what was going on there, okay, good, that's just as well.
Well done for recovering.
Yep, it's okay.
Now, now Steve is going to... ...the comments of members and officers in attendance at the meeting. We might have already just done that by chat, but I'm just checking with Steve. Yes, good afternoon members, can I just confirm your presence when your name is called please? Christian representatives and other denominations, well Peter Crosby for a start is giving his apologies Chairman. Andrew Hornsby.
Yes.
Swati Sreenvason.
Yes.
Dr Tanweh Ahmed is giving his apologies Chairman. Amanda Grant.
Yes, I'm here.
Claire Simons.
Yes, I'm here.
Shaun Wade.
Yes, I'm here.
Our Church of England representatives, David Clements.
Yes, present.
Sherry Edwards.
Yes, present.
Lindsay Norris.
Steve, it's Gillian here, Lindsay Norris is currently on furlough so would not have received any of the notifications of the meeting.
Okay, thank you Gillian. Take that as an apology, yeah. Yeah, apologies, yeah. Mark Plato.
Yes, I'm here, thank you.
Associations representing teachers, Elizabeth Moore.
Yes, here.
Kay Sutherland.
Yep, yep.
And then Lincolnshire County Council. Councilor Bob Adams is going to be late Chairman, he's got quite an intensive planning committee at South Kesterton. Councilor Jackie Brockway.
Yes Chairman.
That's him. And Councilor Mark Whittington.
Yes, here Steve.
Thank you Mark. Co-opted member Jack Dryden, I haven't heard either way Chairman. Okay, that's good. And in terms of offices Chairman, Wendy Harrison.
Yes.
RE Advisor to the council. Gillian Giorgio, Diocesan RE Advisor.
Yeah, I'm here.
And Jill Chandonair, Inclusion and Attendance Manager, Lincolnshire County Council.
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you, thank you Chairman. Anything from Jill Steve? Did I miss that? Did we get Jill?
Yes, we did Chairman, thank you.
Thank you for that. So I can confirm no one's been missed from the list. I also agree with you on that. Can I ask Councilor Jackie Brockway please to do our opening reflections?
Thank you very much Chairman, I apologise for last time, I thought nobody's ever going to believe me but I really couldn't get there. One of the things that I actually do, one of the things that I do as a hobby is I attend auctions. And when you go to auctions, you buy an awful lot of rubbish that you don't need, but you also find some very beautiful things. On one occasion I went along and there was a deceased estate where somebody's books were being disposed of. I bought a pile of literary books and in that pile was this book, which is Devotional Prayers for the Seventeenth Century. Within that book was this bit of paper. Now you often find bits of paper and letters, but this one was particularly beautiful. And with your permission Chairman, I will read it. It's an Elizabethan prayer for our enemies, it's a traditional prayer and I thought with everything that's going on in the world at the moment, it's very apt, it's rather lovely and I hope you enjoy it. It says, "Most merciful and loving Father, we beseech thee most humbly, even with all our hearts, to pour out upon our enemies with bountiful hands, whatsoever things thou knowest may do them good, and chiefly, a sound and uncorrupt mind, where through they may know thee and love thee in true charity and with their whole heart, and love us, thy children, for thy sake. Let not their first hating of us turn to their harm, seeing that we cannot do them good for want of ability; Lord, we desire their amendment and our own. Separate them not from us by punishing them, but join and knot them to us by thy favourable dealing with them, and seeing we all be ordained to be citizens of the one everlasting city, let us begin to enter into that faith here already by mutual love, which may bring us right forth together." And that's it Chairman, thank you.
Amen. Thank you very much for that Jackie, that was wonderful.
Thank you.
And if we could give some thought before the end of the meeting, who would do our next reflection please? But that was wonderful, how interesting that the prayers of different ages can still speak to us, isn't it? I'd now like to take any apologies for absence, I think Steve you've done the apologies as we went along.
Yes, just to confirm Chairman, Tanweh Ahmed, Peter Crosby and Lindsay Norris. And as I say, Bob Adams, Councilor Bob Adams is going to be late Chairman, thank you.
Thank you for that, that's splendid, I think it's very good attendance. There's something to be said for not having to drive across the county, isn't there? Could I take declarations of councillors' interests please?
No declaration from me Chairman.
I'll just pause for a minute, if you want to put it on the chat.
Yeah, nothing from me Chairman.
And nothing from me Mr Chairman.
Members reminded they only need to declare any relevant interests which have not been declared on their declaration of pecuniary interest forms. Okay, any indications Steve on chat perhaps? No?
All clear Chairman, thank you.
That's fine, thanks very much everybody. Before I move to acceptance of the minutes, can I remind members that only those who attended 26th of November 2019 can speak and vote on them, my goodness, what a long time ago that feels. So, I assume you've all got the minutes in front of you, is that okay? Has everybody, I can assume Carl Ty that everybody's read the minutes. So unless there's a problem at this stage. I can have the minutes of the meeting of Sacre held on 26th of November 2019 as an accurate record. Can I have a second after my motion please?
Yes, Sherry Edwards.
Thank you Sherry.
Thank you Sherry.
Okay, if no one disagrees then please confirm okay. That could be done on the chat. I'm assuming that's alright, I'll sign the minutes after the meeting. Oh, I don't know if I can electronically sign them Steve, we'll have to see, but anyway I can sign them after the meeting. Item five, correspondence received by the Chairman if any. I haven't actually received anything other than the usual information from Steve. And then item six is a training session for Sacre presentation, which I'd like to invite Wendy Harrison, our RE Advisor, to give that presentation and it's about the role and purpose of Sacre. Thanks for that Wendy.
Okay, it does, sorry, you're breaking up a bit Chris, but hopefully I won't break our point in the presentation. Well at least at my end, I can't see the chat, so if you're asking me questions, it's not very easy for me to pick those up. So if there are any questions, if you could give them at the end, is that alright Chris? Is that okay Chris?
Yeah, that's fine, thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to attempt to show the PowerPoint now. Just get rid of this. Now Chris, can you just tell me that, can everybody see that?
I can see it Wendy.
Yes.
Okay, I'll get back in then. Alright, good, so I will go straight through this, I mean normally I wouldn't do that, normally we'd have much more interaction but things aren't quite normal are they? So in the next few minutes, particularly for people who've joined us recently, but maybe to remind people who've been around with us for quite a while about what a Sacre actually is and what its responsibilities are, and maybe to, for us to think for the next meeting about what more we could be doing. And first of all, I thought I ought to say something about Jill and myself because I was aware that some of you may see us at meetings and think, but who are they? What do they actually do? My dog's now started barking by the way, but if you ignore that. So there are two of us working on RE most of the time, so there's Jill who works for the Diocese and she's going to say something in a few minutes about church schools and she works full-time at the Diocese. And, well she would probably say more than full-time and I'm quite sure she does, probably twice as much as full-time. And I work on a contract with Lincolnshire and that gives me an equivalent of approximately five days a month. I mean that obviously varies with the time of the year, what sort of things there are to do and so forth, but that's how we work. And we both work with all schools, so it's not as though Jill just works with church schools and I work with the others, we do cross over. The sad thing is we don't have enough time to meet up and work together, but we do seem to synchronise quite well even though we don't meet up, would you say that's the case Jill?
Yes, I would, yes, we do like to work as effectively together as we possibly can so we're avoiding duplication of work and duplication of work.
Yeah, and it is actually quite astonishing how often in meetings people do say to me when we're talking, "Oh yeah Jill said that" or, you know, "Jill told us to do it that way as well." I've never encountered any time when I've been in and somebody's said, "Oh the Diocese has told us something completely different." So it does seem to be working, but you can see that our work is slightly different because of the time we have. But we are about supporting schools in the same way really. So what do we need to know as a group? We do need to know what a Sacre is, how it's composed, the roles and responsibilities. So what is a Sacre? Well I'm sure you all know that it stands for the Standing Advisory Council on Religious Education. So if you didn't know before, that's what you're a member of. And it's part of local government, which is why we have local authority members and so forth and councils on our Sacre. And its main function, although there's a huge paper being written on the function of Sacres, but its main function is to advise the local authority on matters relating to RE and collective worship. Now I would hold my hand up and say that my work seems to be predominantly about RE and less these days about collective worship. I'm also advisor to Leicester's Sacre and in that case, in their profile, collective worship comes much higher up the list of priorities because they have something called determinations which I'll talk about in a minute. But Jill, sorry to sort of just drop this on you, but would you say that in your role with the Diocese, you do probably more than me about collective worship?
I have to admit, until very recently when it was, the responsibility was given over to my colleague Lindsay Norris who sits as part of the Church of England group for Sacre, but yes, certainly the expectation that church schools are keeping this statutory requirement for a daily act of collective worship that is Christian in nature, that is more of a priority in church schools, so I do tend to do more support on that.
Yeah, I mean in my role, I do always remind schools that this is a statutory responsibility and it was interesting because I had an email the other day which said, "Well now that we're back, we'll probably be back to school but with social distancing, we don't have to do assemblies anymore." And of course the response to that was, "Well no one ever said you've got to be standing close together, the whole school in a hall to do it, you can have your collective worship in whatever way you choose to organise it." It might be interesting though to see if some schools start to use this as an excuse not to do it. But whatever, it is our function to be aware of RE and collective worship. It was actually in 1944 that local education authorities were empowered by law to set up Sacres. They could set up Sacres and in those days religious education was then called religious instruction. Now even I wasn't around in 1944, but I do remember religious education being called RI and had a different emphasis altogether. And at that time and following then, only about 10 Sacres were set up. But it was the 1988 Education Reform Act which a lot of us remember because it did change the face of RE and Sacres. This compelled local education authorities to set up Sacres and in order to oversee what had by then become religious education. So now, all local authorities must have a Sacre which must be given time to meet and fulfil its statutory duties, usually three times a year, some have more. In Leicester for example, we have two each term, but sometimes I think we could manage those agendas in one, but they're a group that like to meet often, so they meet six times a year. But three is far more common. So the composition of a Sacre is set up by law. So as I'm sure you're aware, Committee A is Christian denominations other than the Church of England and other religions and their denominations reflecting the principal religions of their area. And Committee B is the Church of England and Committee C is teacher and head teacher associations and others representing education interests. And Committee D, the local authority. And all Sacres have to operate under these committees. We do also have the option for co-opted members and we have one humanist co-opted member, but they don't have a vote. So we're constantly in our meetings, Steve and Chris and I, trying to see that we've got the balance right. And this is not always an easy task because people come and go, sometimes it's very, very difficult to replace people. So I'm sure even as I speak, we have got gaps in certain areas where people have left and we've not been able to replace them. But that's what the committee system looks like. So all those four groups must be represented on a Sacre and the number of those groups are determined by our Sacres constitution, of which Steve has a copy and I'm sure will be delighted to give any of you who want some bedtime reading. And I'll just go over that what I said a minute ago, the composition of Committee A should be broadly proportionate to the religions and denominations represented in the local area. And I'll say broadly proportionate, as a general rule though, we like to see that it's representative of a range of faith communities and beliefs. My own view on that is that it's a bit like the agreed syllabus, if you work in an authority that's predominantly white, identifies as Christian, you might want to see that that Committee A has a good mixture of people from other faiths, if you see what I mean. It's a bit like saying if you have a locally agreed syllabus in an area that's mainly one religion, you would want to have other religions as well, so that it represents a balance. So that's how that works. And then in terms of our responsibilities, Sacres have to advise the local authority on these matters, that is the locally agreed syllabus, RE, collective worship, either in response to some sort of referral audibles where they have very much a multicultural, multi-faith population and they deem it impractical to have mainly Christian worship. They still do have to have Christian worship, that they have much more of a balance of worship representing other faiths. And so for example, in cities like Leicester, we grant these every single term and renew them. But I don't think it's something we've ever done in Lincolnshire. We publish an annual report and that's part of our advice to the local authority and we're going to be looking at our annual report in a few minutes. This talks about what we've done during the year, the actions we've taken and so forth. And this annual report also goes to National Sacre and the DFE, so it's a really important document. We must meet in public, these meetings are open to the public, we keep minutes and I believe this meeting's been recorded for that reason. To be effective, we really need to monitor that provision and quality, both of the locally agreed syllabus and of RE and of collective worship. And I think it's true that Gillian and I do this pretty well, so that we provide targeted advice and support for schools so that at any time if you ask us, we can tell you how things are broadly speaking. Like me, I'm sure Jill gives a record of schools she's visited, we look at the issues that come up and we monitor our support. I mean for example, a few years ago, I remember reporting back that assessment was the issue, that it was one of the things that schools were really having issues with and support was targeted in that direction. And more recently, I and I suspect Jill, have been targeting advice and support around the new Ofsted framework, particularly in relation to things like deep dives, progression and so forth. We also advise the local authority on provision of CPD for teachers and as far as is possible, we both provide training and support to teachers in different ways, in centralised training, in school training, in one-to-one or sometimes working with small groups, staff meetings and so on. And so we make sure that teachers get a good balance of support from us. We also, if we need to, consider complaints made about RE and collective worship. Over the past few years have been very few of these, but we have had them and I've still got the copies of them and we're bound to look into those and address them. As you'll know, we also consider where changes need to be made to the locally agreed syllabus in partnership with the local authority and then through our agreed syllabus conference we act on that. So you'll be aware of the most recent agreed syllabus that we produced, more of that later as well. So an important role of Sacre is to actually have a say in the religious education curriculum and what that should look like for Lincolnshire. Now, that means that we might require the local authority to review the agreed syllabus. This time we did, another time we might not, it depends on Sacre. Sacre might look at our syllabus in three years' time and say, "No, it's okay, we want to keep it with very minor changes." Or on another occasion it might say, "No, we want a completely new syllabus." And as we said earlier, we may co-opt individuals who are not actually members of the four committees. So they could be students, those with non-religious worldviews, any number of things, but they are just co-opted if they don't fit in to the four committees. Okay, I wanted to say something about academies and our work with academies. As you know, academies are independently funded state schools and officially they are outside the remit of the local authority because they are outside the local authority and therefore of Sacre. However, Sacre does have within its power to discuss any matters related to its functions as it sees fit, i.e. the provision of RE, collective worship in Lincolnshire. So it may include the provision of RE in academies in its discussions or refer to it. So what I'm really saying is, it would be a good idea for us I think to make more effort with academies because they can be represented through co-option onto Sacre if all parties are in agreement and that's maybe something we need to think a little bit more about. I work with academies and I'm employed by the local authority and I know Jill works with them too. So we have got the work going on there. So I wouldn't want you to think that academies are outside our remit. And academies are very happy to work with us and with Sacre. As far as I know, most of the academies I've been working with have adopted our agreed syllabus. As you know, they have to provide RE, but they don't have to use the locally agreed syllabus. The local authority also has responsibilities to us and it must ensure there is a Sacre and it must ensure that all four groups are represented and it must ensure that the agreed syllabus is reviewed every five years and so forth. And it may establish an agreed syllabus conference to review it if necessary. And it must ensure that funds and support are in place to enable Sacre to fulfil its duties. And our Sacre is well supported by the local authority and has been for many, many years now. It was quite a long time ago that I became the advisor for the local authority, there hadn't been an advisor previously to that. And ever since then, the local authorities met those responsibilities and kept the funding going and will continue to do so I hope. And the local authority must take note of and respond to advice that we give it. So if we advised it, there was a great need for a change in the syllabus, they would have to listen to us. If there was a serious complaint about RE, they would have to listen to us and act upon what we say. So to summarise, and then I'll take some questions. I know I've rattled through this a bit, but I think most of you know most of this, but you may want to ask some questions on some of the detail. Sacres are statutory bodies which all local authorities must have and must support. They should be representative of the local community. They are responsible for monitoring RE and collective worship in most schools and they are instrumental in ensuring quality experiences for all pupils in RE and collective worship. At the very beginning, I talked about both our roles and although I said that we both work, that's Jill and I, in church schools, maintained schools and other schools, academies and so forth. It's also true to say that her role is slightly different to mine because she's linked to the Diocese. And this bit I have spoken to Jill about beforehand, I'm not just dropping her in it. Jill, did you want to say something about church schools and the differences that there are in working with some church schools? I'm thinking particularly that some members might not be aware, I mean some teachers aren't aware, of the difference for example between voluntary aided and controlled schools and academies with religious funding and so forth, is that okay?
Yeah, that's absolutely fine. I noted that we had a brief discussion about this at our previous meeting which Wendy was not present at, to think about the implications of this for inspection, particularly in terms of Ofsted inspection. What you have in... What you have in this country are a number of schools that are what you might call community schools, so they have no religious character at all. You have a group of schools who have what we define as distinctively religious character, and those would be Church of England and Methodist schools, and then a third group that are called faith schools, and that would cover schools such as Catholic schools, Muslim schools, Hindu schools, Sikh schools. The difference between schools of religious character and faith schools is that the former, although I will absolutely admit that this is handled better in some regions of the country than others, but the intention is that schools of religious character should be open to the local community, no matter what the particular faith background of the pupils are, but that the ethos of that school, for our purposes, they are legally obliged to follow the locally agreed syllabus for RE. And just like community schools, they can be inspected for the quality of their RE in terms of the curriculum by Ofsted as part of a Section Five or a Section Eight Ofsted inspection. The other group of these schools of religious character, Church of England and Methodist schools, are called voluntary aided, and these are treated a little differently, they have different responsibilities in terms of employment, and they have particular responsibilities in terms of RE. And involuntary aided schools, the governing body of the school, or the Board of Trustees, if it's an academy, are entitled to designate how the religious education should be delivered. For that reason, the quality of their RE is inspected as part of their denominational inspection, their church school inspection, rather than by Ofsted. Is that all right?
Yeah, sorry, I'm on. That was really good. It's not surprising that some teachers actually get a bit confused about the difference. I mean, recently, when the new Ofsted framework came about, there was a lot of confusion about something I'm going to talk to you about in a few minutes, and that's the deep dives for RE, and who could have them. But anyway, Chris, shall we take any questions now about any of this?
Yes, please, if people would like to ask questions, if they could indicate by chat, and then I'll call them.
Yeah.
And Steve, if you could keep an eye on the chat.
Can you hear me, Chair? And Wendy?
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you. Can I thank you very much indeed, and can I also thank Gillian for the excellent explanation as well? So thank you. You started by saying that it was very good for perhaps new members of SACRAE, but also perhaps members who've been on SACRAE for a long time, for a reminder about what exactly SACRAE is all about. I know that we've got David Clements with us, and of course, Gillian very often attends and gives presentations at Lincolnshire Diocesan Board meetings. I just wondered, Wendy, whether or not you thought it would be a good idea, and indeed, perhaps Gillian and David, to have this also, a presentation like this, that perhaps we could recommend to the Diocesan Board to have at one of our meetings? Because again, there are quite a lot of new members, and I just wondered whether it would be very good for them to have that as well, to deepen their understanding and consolidate their understanding.
Yes, I think that would be, that would be fine by me. I mean, what I presented today was a fairly, a brief version of something that I would have done had we been in, you know, shall I say, a real meeting? And if we were doing that, we'd certainly, I'd certainly want to work on it with Jill, so that the slides incorporated more about church schools, and in other words, a bit that Jill said. But I don't see any reason why that couldn't be made into a presentation that could be made more readily available. What do you think, Jill?
Thank you, Cherry, for that suggestion. We obviously do talk about RE with our church school leaders, be they head teachers, senior leaders, middle leaders, or governors, and as well as those who work in a voluntary capacity in church schools to support those schools. And we do tend to make clear that distinction between my work as Diocesan advisor, Wendy's work as the local authority RE advisor, and ensuring that everybody is aware what quality and quantity of support is available for their schools, and really to reiterate the fact that Wendy and I are very much working from the same page, so that they'll be getting very good support and advice regardless of who they go to.
I absolutely agree. I think it would be very good to perhaps have it as a presentation, for it to be suggested that we have it as a presentation at one of the board meetings, and perhaps myself or David Clements, depending on how he feels about it, might think it was a good idea to put forward.
Well, I'm very happy to contribute to that, if you would like me to, so you know, no problem with that. As I say, it's just the presentation needs refining a little bit, and certainly making more inclusive of things like, you know, church schools and diocesan work and so forth, but I'm sure we could do that, I have no problem with that at all. So if it's minuted, and you can follow that up with us, Cherry, that would be great. You know, just email me and tell me what you want, and Jill and I can work together on that.
Thank you very much. Well, I will make it, thank you very much.
Mark later.
Thank you. Thanks very much indeed to both Wendy and Gillian, as other people have said, that was an excellent summary of the situation. And I think it's fascinating, though, that the government has updated the guidance with regard to RE in 2010. But for collective worship, we still work from the framework that was devised in 1988. So it's almost 30 years, well, it's 30 years old, or 28 years old, or whatever it is, my mathematics is going haywire at the moment. But yeah, and clearly things have changed in the world of education, but the guidance document for collective worship, you know, is that original document provided with Maggie Flacher and her government, way back in time.
Well, that's true. And I mean, the circular, the circular 194 has never been properly updated at all, even though the RE community's constantly lobbied for it to be changed and looked at. And it just seems, it feels a bit as though there's just been a lack of a will to do that, or to look at it properly. And that's possibly why quite a few schools don't take too seriously their responsibilities for collective worship, because I'd have to say that I also think that it's been watered down by Section Five Ofsted inspections as well. And so they have a feeling that if they do nothing, or they don't follow the law in relation to collective worship, very little will happen. And sad to say, in most cases, it doesn't. I am talking more actually about secondary schools here, but it does need a complete overhaul and a complete rewrite, I'm with you there completely, Mark. Did you want to add anything, Jill?
Yes, I think the only thing that I would really add there is that it's, you know, and I say this as an employee of the Church of England, with the full expectation that acts of collective worship will continue in some form in schools of religious character and faith schools, which would be entirely appropriate. It is becoming increasingly anachronistic, I think, and it is a huge barrier for the academic nature of RE as part of the broad and balanced curriculum, to be tied so closely in a legal context to acts of worship. It becomes a real barrier for teachers when there is this very close tie made between teaching about religion, which should be an academic thing, and then worshipping God, which is a very different manner of things. I know within the Church of England Education Office, there is a very pragmatic approach of, well, we don't anticipate the government are going to worry about changing this legislation anytime soon, so how are we going to support schools to do this in a way that is inclusive and inspiring and meets the need of all students and adults who might be participating in it, whether it's secondary or primary?
Yeah, yeah, noted.
Thanks. David Clements wishes to speak.
Okay, Southern First, Chairman.
Oh, sorry, hello, Kay.
Well, I actually wrote in the chat, and I was listening very, very carefully to Gillian, because I agree wholeheartedly with her, but just to say, having spent my lifetime as a teacher, Deputy Head and Head Teacher in, but I have to say, and I have no experience of secondary school, absolutely none, and it seems quite shameful for the children, because I think in today's word of diversity, they need to know a lot more about Christianity, that primary school collective worship is a lively way.
Yes, that's partly why I made a bit of a distinction between primary and secondary. Yeah. Yes, that's, can you hear me, Chris? Okay?
I can hear you, yeah. Can you hear me?
I was just, yeah, I was just going to respond to that and say, that's partly why I made the distinction between primary and secondary. I do think outside of church schools, i.e. most of the schools that I work in, it's a very different picture in secondary schools at any rate, and I visit a number of secondary schools where there is very little going on in terms of collective worship, although they may well have what they would call assemblies, and they do bring years or groups together to talk about things that are important to them as a school community.
David Clements, Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, Wendy and Jill, for the presentation. Might just go back to Cherry Edwards' comment in terms of the Board of Education, that would be something perhaps Jill could take back to the Diocesan Director to see what she thinks and how that would work. And equally, the comment that Kay's just made in the chat about new governors having some information, certainly as far as church school governors are concerned, that when they're appointed through the Board of Education, that there is a sheet or a note that describes the difference between controlled, aided, and to an extent, academies as well. Thank you.
That'd be a very good idea. Thanks for that, David. Have I got any other questions? Well, can I say, Wendy and Jill, that brilliant presentation? I mean, I'm also fascinated by the fact that we have this tape from sort of 1988, where there appears not to have been massive change in the legislation, I'm open to correction on that, but that's interesting. And I can certainly testify that there are large swathes of certainly the Catholic Education Service that are not as aware of SACRAE, I would like them to be as the Catholic representatives. So there's, the other thought in my head as well was that I come across really excellent schools like Minster School in Lincoln, which I think is more part of the public school sector, and I wonder really, I'm guessing that SACRAE doesn't apply there either. Do we link in there at all, can I ask?
Not as far as I know, has to be the slightly unsatisfactory answer to that, Chris. I don't know of any links there.
Sorry, I lost you there, Jill.
I don't know, I was saying that I don't know, I've not had any links there, I don't know if Jill has.
No, I don't have any links, but insofar as SACRAE is a local authority body that is entitled to offer support and advice to academies who are not local authority schools, I would have thought the same would pertain to independent schools as well. So we can offer advice, offer support, and it would be up to the independent schools whether they took it or not.
I've got a frozen screen here, is.
Sorry. Can you hear, Chair, can you hear me?
I can hear you now, just, you're just coming back to me.
Okay.
I didn't hear Wendy or Gillian at all there, sorry about that, guys.
Okay, just to clarify then.
When I switch my video on, my system, yeah.
Sorry, Wendy, do you want?
I can hear you, I can hear you.
Okay, so just to clarify then, insofar as SACRAE can offer advice and support to academies who are not local authority schools, I would expect the same would pertain to independent schools. I know that I have offered some support to an independent school based in North East Lincolnshire through North East Lincolnshire SACRAE.
Thank you for that, and I've seen the answer on the chat as well, thanks regarding Minster, very grateful.
Chairman, have you seen the comment from Amanda Grant in the chat column?
Yes, I have, thank you, Amanda, re-Minster, through CCJ Training and Workshops, that's brilliant. And that we deliver us an offer a range of TRG training, very grateful. Are there any other questions, sorry? Well, thanks, Wendy and Jill, that was a brilliant presentation and very informative, and I agree, would be good to sort of get that presentation out to everybody and other places, if that's okay. Moving on to item seven, which is you, Wendy, isn't it, summary of Ofsted inspection?
Yeah.
Spiritual, moral, social, and cultural.
Yeah, actually, the next two, mind, if I can try and share the paper, just give me a second. Let me just get out of this. Can you all see that? Well, can you see it, Chris? Because if you can see it, everybody can. Yeah, okay. This is a paper that you've been sent by Steve, so if you can't see it, let Chris know by through chat. I just wanted to say this, I've gone on to page 26, I've altered the introductory part to the SMSC document, just to bring it up to date, I don't intend to go through it all, but I have mentioned on page 26, the new key judgements, well, I say new, it was from September 2019, that key inspectors, sorry, the key judgements made by inspectors, and I use this four-point scale, which we need to be aware of, which is the quality of education, and that's where the focus on the curriculum now comes, and you'll be aware, there's a massive focus on the curriculum, which wasn't there before. So they've shifted from an emphasis on data to focus on the curriculum, along with behaviour and attitudes, personal development, and leadership and management. So that's the first thing to note. And incidentally, I think a follow-up training session for SACRAE could be well spent on the new Ofsted framework, which I know both Jill herself do lots of training on. And then, if you move to page 27, this is a new, this was new last autumn, and made people quite frightened when it was introduced. For a start, nobody was quite sure what deep dives meant, well, some people still aren't, but it baffled people a bit. But simply, as I've explained here, a deep dive is an in-depth look by Ofsted inspectors at specific subjects in a school. So it's part of the whole curriculum, the whole inspection, but Ofsted choose certain subjects that they're going to look at in some depth. Now, this means that it could be RE, but it might not be, and it says that about halfway down the paragraph, Ofsted can choose any subject area for their deep dive, with the exception of RE involuntary aided schools, who, as Jill mentioned earlier, are subjected to an inspection of RE under SIMs. So our maintained schools have got to think about their foundation subjects in RE in a way that maybe they hadn't before. So you'll have seen, as we look through the SMSC reports, only one in this batch had a deep dive of RE. And if I go to the first page of the SMSC, it's page 28, I've highlighted where we've got good comments, because as you know, we usually send supportive letters to these. The first one is highlighted, where it says inspection of a good school, I just wanted to draw your attention to that, where it says inspection of a good school, that simply means that the school was previously good, and the inspection is framed around knowing that. Okay. What on earth was an inspector, you know, trying to say? And as I've said before, some of these schools, they are at the mercy of how much inspectors tell us, some of these schools might be doing brilliant RE and brilliant SMSC and so these schools might be doing brilliant RE and brilliant SMSC and so on, but inspectors just are not mentioning it. So it is a bit of a lottery. North Hawesby in Grimsby gets lots and lots of very positive comments. And inspectors starting now to mention a bit more about RE. And in case you haven't noticed it, that one does actually mention the trips to a mosque and visitors from the Hindu community, links with Christian groups and so on. But you'll notice then again, at marking deeping, all the inspector could be bothered to tell us was pupils learn how to be respectful and tolerant. Now, when I was an inspector, one of the things we were told above all else was always back up your statements with evidence. And it would have been nice to know, wouldn't it, in that school? Where was the evidence for that? What did they do that shows that they're respectful and tolerant? So I'd say, you know, it's pretty poor writing still. And look at Belton Lane. Pupils can speak confidently about the religions they learn about. Well, maybe they can, but we would have liked a little bit of information about that. Whereas at St Faith and St Martin C Junior School, now, this is the one that had a deep dive. Incidentally, I will just say this to you, on a school I won't mention in Lincolnshire, I was doing a training on Ofsted, not RE and Ofsted, it's just on Ofsted and the curriculum. And over lunch, a head teacher said to me, did you realise that it's largely left to the head teacher to decide which subject is chosen for a deep dive? So I said, well, yeah, you know, I did kind of know that. And she said, yes. So I've told all the staff, they better keep on my good side, otherwise I should be recommending them for a deep dive. Not, not the best form of leadership, I don't think, but, but there you go. But what I wanted to say is, head teachers do have a say in this, in their initial discussion with inspectors about which subjects should be chosen, aside from reading and maths, which are almost always chosen. Now, you're seeing St Faith and St Martins, it's clear, isn't it, that the teaching of RE is excellent, et cetera, et cetera. Strong understanding of Christianity and Islam, so that points to good impact of our new syllabus. And it also mentions about pupils being reflective and spiritual. That's the kind of writing we like to see in Ofsted inspections. And likewise, Frisney All Saints talks about different cultures, faiths, Hinduism, Islam, reflection, spiritual and so on. The other ones I've highlighted are Lesley Manser, where they don't just tell us that the pupils are tolerant and respectful, they say what that means. They explain that it's to do with their work in RE. They explain that pupils enjoy learning about different faiths. They talk about philosophical type questions and even quote one, if God is good, why do bad things happen? So this is good inspection reporting. Likewise, in the next one, Hingham C Primary School in Stamford, strong community links, religious education taught well. Christian values are not superficial, but they're embedded in the school. They learn about a range of faiths, visit places of worship. So if you just glance over those two pages, you'll see a lot of yellow, and that's the highlighted bit, where schools are doing pretty well on RE, SMSC British values. Inspectors, by the way, have gone a bit quiet on British values. I'm not seeing quite so many comments on that at the moment. In terms of secondary, we've got different, two different ones here. Skegness Academy does mention British values, but the curriculum does not ensure that they all understand these as well as they should. So that tells us, well, kind of something and nothing really. Whereas Spalding High School, who I've had quite a bit of contact with, they have a deep understanding of moral, social and cultural issues, engaging well in discussion and well prepared. So as usual, we've got a bit of a mixed picture. Now, something I've added on is on page 31. I thought you might be interested to see where deep dives come. And I think as we build this up, we'll get an interesting picture. So you'll see, in the primary section, of course, most schools get a deep dive in reading and in maths. In RE, only one school, as you've just seen, had a deep dive. And in secondary, none at all. But it'd be interesting, won't it, over the next couple of years, to see how these figures stack up, whether we get many in RE. Now, I say over these next two years, there'll be precious few RE, sorry, precious few Ofsted reports to report on next, next term, because there have been no inspections for some time now. So we've got, in summary, a mixed picture, but in the primary sector, some really, really encouraging comments about RE. And in secondary, I think it shows us, and what I'm going to say about the annual report shows us, we have a hill to climb with secondary schools. And I think perhaps in the next year or so, that's where a lot of our work may well focus. So Chris, I'll take any questions on that. But it is quite encouraging, isn't it?
Elizabeth Moore, Chairman.
Hi. Just only to say that I've just made a comment to say that I think some people may find a follow-up session about the quality of the curriculum and deep, quality of the curriculum area of Ofsted and the role of deep dives may be helpful. But then I wondered whether some people would also find it helpful if there was a bit of deeper explanation around the inspection of RE and maybe collective worship within Siam's.
I think both. I was sort of imagining a session, Elizabeth, that would, would go into some depth in both, what it feels like. And also to have a look at some reports, you know, a few Ofsted reports under the new framework, you know, to see what they actually look like, especially those that have had deep dives. I think between us, Jill and I could put together a fairly comprehensive presentation on that and training session.
Brilliant. Thank you.
That sounds good. Thank you very much for that, Wendy. So we're looking now at members' agreement on, to make record, member schools who we should send a letter to, a commendation.
Well, they're the ones that I've highlighted in the yellow on this one. So that's pretty straightforward. And the green ones, yeah.
Yeah. You've highlighted them.
Yeah, just because it cut through a lot of time, really. But, you know, if members want to add others or take away or whatever, that's, that is up to them.
I'm with, with the recommendations there. I'm not getting any indications otherwise. That's fair.
Okay, that's fine. Well, I'll send that with the highlights on to Steve. That's the best way to do that, isn't it? And we get the letters out. And perhaps invite, get back into that practice of inviting schools with good practice to come and speak to us at SACRA about what they've done to achieve that, that report. Okay.
I think that, that'd be a really good idea. And I, upon Elizabeth's point as well about a training session about the quality of curriculum, deep dives, and more information would be good. Right. Thank you for that. I move on to item eight, SACRA Annual Report. If I could invite Wendy to, working you hard today, Wendy, invite Wendy to present the report.
I don't want to say too much about this because members have seen it and have, you know, okayed it. But nice cover. Thanks to, thanks to you, Chris. A very attractive cover this time. I did want to skip on though to the examination results. Just give me a moment, let's find them. What I wanted to say about exam results, and really you need to read the whole text on that in order to appreciate how we stand compared to the situation nationally. Bear in mind that from last year, we had a new grading system that knew, last year was being gradually introduced. So we had a mixture of A stars to G, as well as the new nine to five and so forth. So it's, it's quite difficult. We're not quite comparing like with like. But I guess the important thing is that on page 46, the number of entries for religious studies in Lincolnshire has gone up, well, did go up slightly in 2019, which didn't reflect the national picture, which showed a decline in entries. So that's quite an interesting thing to keep an eye on. And on page 47, at nine to five, which means, you know, the top end, the results for Lincolnshire schools do show a decline overall for 2018, for all pupils, and also for girls and boys separately. So results are lower than the national average overall, but girls achieved above. And girls achieved, outachieved or over, outperformed boys, and that reflects the national picture. So although we need to keep our eye on this, as we do, we're being thwarted in a way, one, because we've had a change of system, and two, because we're going to have a gap now of accurate results because of the lack of examinations this year. So we'll have to wait and see what next year brings. Personally, and I'll ask Jill for reviews in a minute, I'm more interested in getting into secondary schools during this next academic year to see what on earth's going on, because our results do show very interesting, they show an interesting backstory, I think. For example, if you look on page 47, some of these results look incredibly high, but then you look, for example, at number five, because these are the ones that achieved quite well, at Case to Yarborough Academy, 100% at nine to five, but they only entered one person. And likewise for Sir Robert Putterson Academy, 100%, but only one person. So they need interrogating and looking at much more carefully. And for an AS level, and Jill and I have already had a brief conversation about this, it does look as though we're very, very low in our results at the bottom of page 49. But in actual fact, only two schools entered pupils for AS level. So as with any data, we're used to certain individuals and groups using data to bamboozle us at the moment, aren't we? We can use data however we want. We can show whatever we like from it. But my recommendation on the back of this report, I can't tell Jill what to do, but I do recommend that we do have something of a focus on secondary schools, because a lot of our energy has gone into primary schools. And I think that we can start to see the results of that in outcomes. But in secondary, we do have some quite major issues. Did you want to come in there, Jill? Because I do know you have some feelings about this as well.
I do. And obviously, I work across two other local authorities, and it's a very similar picture in the other local authorities. My particular emphasis at the moment is the, how, how schools are bridging key stage twos, the oldest primary school pupils, with key stage three, which are the younger secondary school years. Because I think in primary school, and I am already having conversations with various secondary schools in Greater Lincolnshire about how we might better facilitate thinking about RE curriculum from primary through to secondary to try and address this situation.
Yeah. I mean, I'm aware that the item here is actually about the annual report, but I would just say on the back of that, that Ofsted haven't helped the situation very much, because they got embroiled in a massive argument with schools and incidentally the DFE over whether year nine should be the time when pupils begin their religious studies examination work. And I've got quotes from people high up in Ofsted who about a year ago said, absolutely not. You must not be starting your GCS courses in year nine. And if you do, we'll come down very heavily on you in inspections. And then they appeared to do something of a U-turn, we've seen a few of those recently as well, haven't we? And kind of changed the mind, then didn't, then couldn't make the mind up. And it led a lot of secondary schools into confusion about what they should really be doing. So I do think that the secondary phase is something we need to, to think about and consider. But in terms of this item, Chris, the main thing is for members to agree the annual report.
Thanks for that, Wendy. I've got Jill wishes to speak, if I may.
Sorry, Jill.
Oh, hi. Yes, I just want to, I think Wendy and Gillian already said it really, reiterate the work in secondary and that we need to maybe look at that slightly differently. I think, I think particularly around, I don't know whether it's worth maybe, you know, talking to young people in secondary school and getting from their perspective as to what, whether they have or haven't feel that they've established their views on things. And it's about opening young people's views again, isn't it, to see how, what more they can learn and how it can help them with other things as well. Does that make sense?
I think it makes sense. And I think when we do finally get back into schools again, something that should be on our agenda is possibly some discussion with pupils as part of our chat about RE. I mean, I do it with primary quite a lot anyway, but I haven't done it so much with secondary pupils. So I think that's, that's a really good suggestion, yeah.
Thanks. Thanks for that, Jill. And thanks, Wendy, and also Jill, your contribution there. I'm now getting on the chat side, lots of people saying they're agreed. I think they're agreeing the report. Cherry wishes to speak. Can I call Cherry to speak, please?
Thank you, Chair. I've already said this is an email, but can I thank Wendy again, please? And I'm sure that Gillian had some input there. I can thank Wendy again for putting all the work in putting together an excellent and very comprehensive report. And thank you, Chair, also for your opening, which I thought was relevant and extremely appropriate. Thank you.
Thanks very much for Cherry. The weird thing is now, it's time, Chris, can I just say, thanks, Cherry. The weird thing is, it's now time to start the next one. These reports are so strange because, you know, the way they go, we're almost a year out of date. So I'm now just beginning the next one. So it's like a never-ending, the painting of the, whatever bridge it is, you know, you finish one and then you start the next one. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you. And, yeah, and Claire has said, well done. Everybody is saying, well done there for, for the report. So I'm grateful. I'm just switching between screens. So the areas of concern I've had is to try and, in our involvement with the churches, because I felt before Shaun came that we didn't perhaps have a wide enough contact with Pentecostal churches, for example, but there are others. So I'm just thinking, it would be a way perhaps of widening contact is, is a wider distribution of the report if people are okay with that. And I, I'll sit down with Jill and Steve and talk about that. Is that okay? I'm just checking the chat. Everybody's saying yes. It's a weird way to run a meeting, isn't it? Right. I think I'm at item nine.
Chairman, there are requests to see your face.
So.
Can we see your face, Chairman?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm switching it on and off because I've noticed when I put video on that I'm, that I'm losing some quality. And it might be my end. So I've been switching it off, just so I can hear everybody else speak. Okay, so where we are now is item nine, Agreed Syllabus, North East Lincolnshire. So invite Jill to present this report, please.
I've just put my camera on, but I may switch it off again because I, I think I've already done. I think I've frozen already. So I think it's probably best if I switch it off, but you can still hear me.
Yeah, that's fine.
Right. I think most of you have the report because it was in, in the information that was sent out. So I just want to update you on where we are with sharing the, our agreed syllabus with other authorities. And I know you've already had this at the last SACRA meeting, but I thought for those who weren't there, in the paper, I did a kind of a summary of where we, where we were and starting with, you know, our own syllabus and when we, when we launched it in 2018, and and the training that we did in, in 2018 and 19. And that it was, it was very well received and obviously a very good syllabus. So thanks to Wendy and Gillian. I am just the salesperson. I am not the creator of the syllabus. So that goes down to the work of Wendy and Gillian and the school, scores of participants. But we were approached by actually three authorities, I believe, North Lincolnshire, North East Lincolnshire and East Riding of Yorkshire, though I haven't heard from the latter one, to see if we could share our syllabus with them and that they could purchase it. So I know that Gillian has met, meets with North, North East Lincolnshire regularly and has sort of fed back. And a little while ago, we came up with a cost for the syllabus per school that we shared with North and North East Lincolnshire. And I think that Chris, the Chair, wrote out to all of you, and you all agreed that that seemed reasonable. wrote out to all of you, and you all agreed that that seemed reasonable. So that was agreed. Time goes by and events take over, but we were back on it again in April. And I met, communicated with Jeanette from North Lincolnshire Council, although she did, was communicating with North East Lincolnshire as well, to say that they wish to adopt the syllabus. And she has confirmed since then that that's definitely what they want to do. So what the plan is, is that they will adopt our syllabus, and that Wendy and Jill will provide the, the input to launch the syllabus this July. I think it's Gillian that's going to do that, and that we will add an extra cost on to that training. And then there will be further training provided by Gillian and Wendy, depending on the needs of the school. Hopefully by then, we'll be able to look at that as face to face, or remotely, depending on where we are. There are some great additional units provided by Gillian will buy for all their schools. So they, North Lincolnshire will buy for 53 schools, 53 maintained and 27 academies. And then it would be their responsibility to make sure it's used by those schools. So that kind of has been established since I wrote this paper. North East Lincolnshire, we'll get back to us separately. And they haven't done as yet, but they will do. So I think that just hopefully gives you an update of where we are. I think it's really positive. I think the fact that they want to purchase it just shows the, the quality that was delivered in the first place. So I hope you agree with me that, you know, it's something to celebrate that we've managed to.
Thanks for that, Jill. That's, that's brilliant. Yeah. And thanks for your work as well, which I don't think we, we mention very often.
Behind the scenes.
Okay. Is that all right?
Mark plays it, Chairman. Mark plays.
Yes, Mark. Sorry, Mark.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Yeah, I was just, I put a little thing on the chats to say, maybe in future, we could, you know, ask if others in our region would be interested in working together with us and do a joint syllabus. It would make much more sense in a way to have, particularly as we move, maybe in the future, to a national syllabus for RE, perhaps we could be working, if it hasn't got to that, on a regional syllabus instead.
Right. Thank you, Mark. Gillian would like to speak, and then David Clements.
Thank you. Mark, I just wanted to reiterate that the RE syllabus that's currently in use in North and North East Lincolnshire is in fact a regional syllabus that crosses to two local authorities, the other side of the Humber. So they've obviously historically been working as a regional syllabus that covers four unitary authorities. But that was something that they felt was no longer as appropriate as working with, with Lincolnshire. So I think that is also the intention of both North and North East Lincolnshire County Councils and Sacres. I also wanted to note that my understanding is that North East Lincolnshire does intend to adopt the Lincolnshire Agreed Syllabus. They are due to meet next week to sign off on that. But they have been in conversations with North Lincolnshire Sacre throughout this whole process, and it's just waiting for the rubber stamp.
Thanks. Thanks, Jill. David, did you want to say anything? David Clements?
I've put something on the chat. I was writing it as Jill was speaking. I just think the local authority, if we're selling it, purchase it for all their schools. We, in this authority, we wrote it for all our schools, and therefore it's the LA's responsibility for that local agreed syllabus. Therefore, they should purchase it for all, not leave schools to choose. It's a local authority responsibility.
Thanks for that, David. Okay. Would anybody else like to speak? Are we, are we about? Just bear with me.
Amanda Grant.
Yeah. Amanda, would you like to speak? Hello. Would anybody else like to speak? Hello, Amanda?
Hello. Yes, I was going to say, when we worked across predominantly from the Birmingham Sacre, because that was a large local authority area with very diverse needs. But we also stretched out across to the West Midlands. So that was potentially 11 local authorities, and a lot of commission to do some work with the Catholic Education Boards, and delivering some key training, which did look at transition from year six, going through into secondary provision. So there is, the focus, I think, is very real where we are now. And I think if there is energy, as long as we don't spread ourselves too thinly, and we celebrate what we do have, and encourage people to embrace it, and feed back, because there has to be reflection, that would allow us to build on that shared good practice.
Thank you for that, Amanda. I think that's a very useful summing up as well. Do I have any other speakers? Or are we, are we ready to move forward?
Chairman.
Chairman, could I just come in briefly, please? It's Jackie.
Who? Yes, please.
Very briefly, just a question about protocol, about what we're doing. Actually, I noticed that there's quite a lot of chat relating to the meeting going on in the chat boxes. And I just want to be sure that members of the public can access that, because if this is not a private meeting, then we need to be making our comments verbally rather than in the boxes, if they can't see them. That's just me being a wimp. Thank you, Chairman.
I confirm that the members who have used the chat column have raised them verbally. Thank you, Chairman.
Yes, they have, Chairman, but it's just something we could slip into without realizing. Make our comment there, and then members of the public perhaps couldn't see it, which would be a bit worrying. Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Thanks very much for that. Are we, are we happy to proceed with the report?
Yes, yes, Chairman.
You just indicated in the chat. I'm not seeing any, anybody disagreeing.
Okay, that's fine, Chris.
So if nobody's saying otherwise, I'm, and I'm switching between chat and. I'm assuming everybody's happy with that, colleagues. So I'm inviting members to approve that we continue with the arrangements detailed in the report. And I'm assuming I've got that agreement. And thank you for such a good discussion on this and the earlier items, too. Is anybody else trying to come in there?
No.
No? Okay. If I could also ask, have I got a volunteer, please, to do a reflection at the next meeting?
I'll do it if you want to, Chair. It's Cherry.
Cherry, are you, are you volunteering, did you say?
Yeah, if you want me to, unless anybody else could.
I, I, I can see a massive hands agreeing. Was that just in my head? No, no. Thank you very much, Cherry. Very grateful. That's brilliant. And the date and time of the next meeting I have is the 17th of November. Yes.
Chris, you've not mentioned the Dyson's report. Does?
Yes.
Item 10.
Item 10?
We haven't mentioned it.
Probably over to Jill, Gillian, Giorgio, Chairman.
Sorry, have I missed an item else?
Item 10.
Gillian, sorry.
Don't worry, I'm not offended, Chair.
Don't be offended, though.
And it's really just.
It's a very interesting meeting to chair.
This prescription will need increasing, and my back is in absolute agony from being static at a laptop eight hours a day. But we will continue to support schools as they move forwards into the next phase of easing lockdown. We're aware we will maybe need to adapt the ways that we are supporting them into the longer term as a result of this current context. Thank you.
Hey there, Chairman.
Hello. Hello, I'm back. I went and came back. Are we all happy to accept Gillian's report? Or is there anybody with any questions? Shall we put it that way? Okay. Thank you very much for that, Gillian. Moving to item 12 then, date and time of the next meeting, which I've got 17th of November 2020. And so we'll be preparing for that. That may be a meeting where we meet, judging from what the Prime Minister said earlier today, that hopefully things are coming. Subject to me improving my own IT down here in Lincoln and connections, I'm very impressed about the way you've all handled it. It was a very interesting meeting to chair. And so I am at the final item, item 12. So unless anybody's got any other points to make, can I thank you for coping with what is technologically quite a difficult meeting, and for all the reports and the discussions we've had, which I think. Is that all right, Steve? Are we in a position to close the meeting?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve. Thanks, Wendy and Gillian.
Thanks, Steve.